Good evening. I'd like to call the Village Board Committee, the whole meeting for August 15th, 2022, to order and ask Clerk Row to call the roll.
Mayor Pisack?
Here.
Trustee Quitzel?
Here.
Trustee Duffy?
Here.
Trustee Greco?
Here.
Trustee Mullin?
Here.
Trustee Sadat?
Here.
Trustee Wins?
Here.
We'll start with public comment. Is there anyone present here tonight to provide non-agenda public comment? If so, please come on down to the podium. I don't see anyone coming down. Anyone on Zoom? Thank you. We'll move on to the regular agenda. First item is the benefits of an automatic license plate reader system in the conduct of law enforcement activities. Chief Lico, would you please introduce this topic?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. For the past year, we've had some internal discussions with the Police Department employees about the benefits of automatic license plate readers. We're now at a point where we see the value in having them, so I've asked Detective Sergeant Jim Eckert to prepare a presentation explaining why we need the cameras, how they work, what they do, and what they do not do. Afterwards, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. So I'll turn it over to Detective Sergeant Jim Eckert.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. Welcome to my second PowerPoint ever. You can all say you were there. Okay, so my name is Jim Eckert. I'm a sergeant, Detective Sergeant with Lyle Police Department. I've been employed with the Lyle Police Department for 16 years. Eleven of those years, I've worked in some facet of the Investigations Unit, two of those as a supervisor of Investigations. Six years I've been assigned to the Major Crimes Task Force, whether it be Fiat or now Merritt Major Crimes. So in regards to license plate readers, or LPRs for today, recent crimes that occurred in Lyle that LPR cameras would have aided the investigation, provided some examples over the past few years, which include multiple burglaries, two Kipps Lawn Mower Sales and Service. We believe that LPRs would have aided in the identification of a vehicle. It was known that the vehicle that was involved in this, in these burglaries, fled east on Ogden Avenue and was only identified as a white van with an unknown plate. In burglaries that occurred at bicycles, et cetera, down in the trails, it was known that the suspects used a U-Haul vehicle, but the plate was unknown. The reason they knew this was in a neighborhood adjacent or behind the business, Ring cameras did see a vehicle in that area, and it was believed that the bicycles were probably moved through the back door and over the fence into the neighborhood where the vehicle was waiting. The vehicle then left the area, but the thing about Ring cameras is they're very nice and they aided us in our investigation. They don't provide very good specifics, especially at night. Recent burglaries within the last few months, there were two that happened consecutively at the Mobile Gas Station at 53 and Maple, and then the BP Amoco at 53 and Warrenville Road. After a review of the red light cameras, three suspect vehicles were observed by these red light cameras. It was dark, raining that night. The vehicles were coming down Maple Avenue towards the business, so no plate was able to be identified by those cameras that are positioned there. Vehicles came from the area. It's believed they came from the area in Maple and 355 as they were traveling westbound. And then after the first burglary at the Mobile, they were then at the Amoco at 53 and Warrenville Road, where it's believed they then got onto I-88s eastbound. So a few years back, there was a shooting in Greenshires Apartments. This happened around 5:00 AM. There weren't a lot of leads to go on due to how early it was, no vehicle description. We believe LPR cameras would have been searched if we had those type of cameras in the area during the timeframe of the incident. It would have helped us to identify a possible suspect vehicle and then ideally suspects involved in the crime. The Speedway gas station located at Ogden Avenue and 355, that has been targeted for robberies in the past. Vehicles have been observed leaving the scene and getting on the interstate because 355 is right there. We've seen the suspect vehicle, but again, even if it's close to the lot, even the cameras that are actually at the Speedway are not of the highest quality to be able to, like, a lot of people think if you pull up to, you know, the pumps or whatever, we're just going to be able to get the plate. It rarely happens. So in 2021, Lyle Police Department received 50 reports involving catalytic converter thefts. In 2022, between January and the end of July, the number of reports involving catalytic converters theft is already at 79. In 2021, the Lyle Police Department received 11 reports for stolen motor vehicles. We are on pace currently for the number to be around 10, if it continues at this pace. So automatic license plate readers have been used to investigate following major types of crimes, homicides, missing persons, burglaries, home invasions. LPR cameras are becoming the first step in a major investigation. A lot of what happens sometimes is the first question when we're out there is, when we're out with the major crimes or whatever, is are there LPRs in that town and have they been checked if you have a suspect vehicle or a timeframe? The LPR cameras are extremely useful in any type of investigation that involves a motor vehicle. So LPRs allow detectives to search and establish timeframe for when a vehicle was stolen. We're talking about stolen motor vehicles. Detectives can also search for the vehicle through using other towns' LPR cameras that we have access to. So if a stolen vehicle is involved in crimes in, you know, Naperville, Lyle, along that, you can search those and be able to see that car in those areas at those times. And kind of like, we had recent crimes where we had multiple catalytic converter thefts along Ogden Avenue at some different businesses. The vehicle was also later determined to have been in Naperville as well. And that this will help us, you know, once you have that, you can recover, you can help, you can more quickly recover the vehicle and identify and apprehend the offender. So LPR cameras can be used to alert officers when a stolen car is observed on a Lyle LPR, ideally in that, if we should choose to go in that direction. This allows for patrol officers to react to real-time information so that they can apprehend the offenders. Offenders often use the interstates 88 and 355, which obviously we know borders our town. They use the interstates to evade capture, knowing that they can travel at high rates of speed and at late hours when traffic is, there's not as much traffic on there. All right. So how do these license plate readers work? LPRs generate objective, real-time investigative leads and alerts. They provide vehicle details and a license plate. They provide indiscriminate evidence from fixed locations. So proactively, Flock cameras, which is the brand of LPR that we've been looking into, these cameras provide real-time alerts when a stolen or wanted vehicle enters the village. So if patrol officers are working on a Monday night in Lyle and one stolen vehicle enters the village, they can be notified. What's current, a lot of current crime trends are that stolen vehicles are being used to commit other crimes. They're being used to steal other cars. They're being used to steal catalytic converters. So this alerts the officers in the field so they can take action to apprehend offenders while disrupting any in-progress crimes. Investigative, Flock cameras help determine whether and which vehicles were at the scenes of crimes or in the area of a crime when it occurred. So this is a, what the technology is, license plate recognition. It gathers objective evidence and facts about the vehicle, not about people. Alerts police of wanted vehicles. It's used to solve crimes and adheres to state laws. This picture on the right there shows you kind of the information it takes, and that's the picture you're looking at of what, if we did a search on that license plate, that's, and that that license plate had hit a license plate reading camera, that's what we would get. You can also search by color of the vehicle, make of the vehicle. You can specific your search, or you can narrow your search down that way. What LPR technology is not, is not facial recognition. It's not tied to personal identification information. It's tied to vehicle information. It's used for, is not used for traffic enforcement. Data storage is automatically deletes in 30 days, and information is not sold to third-party vendors. Okay, some case studies to kind of put, you know, a case to some of this and how it's been used. This is a case from Georgia in which an Amber Alert was issued. Search was conducted with Flock Safety Cameras at 1:01 PM. You can see at 2:30 there, suspect vehicle is located. It is stopped, and an arrest is made at 5:03 PM, and then at 6:00, the baby is reunited with mom. Recently, and this is within the last two weeks, there was a homicide in Morris, Illinois. So on August 4th, Morris PD is investigating the shooting, which turns into a homicide. The victim's vehicle is taken during the incident by the suspect. The vehicle is later located in Joliet using the Flock cameras. Police were alerted and were able to catch up to this vehicle with the alleged shooter behind the wheel of the car. So I'm just going to play you this video, kind of to illustrate that.
Great to have you with us. We start here at 10 with that breaking news in far southwest suburban Morris.
And we've just learned new developments on the shooting within the last hour. Let's go live to our Charlie Damar with the latest. Charlie?
And Joe and Erica, good evening. Police here in Morris are still on scene almost six hours later. We did learn tonight that a woman who was shot here this afternoon has died from her injuries. Police here in Morris crediting technology with helping them make an arrest.
Dozens of officers with long guns drawn flooded a residential area of southwest Morris, about 60 miles from Chicago. They were actively searching for a shooter.
When I say Morris, the epitome of small-town America, is the epitome of small-town America. Like, nothing like this ever happens.
You know, it was on lockdown, shelter in place. We can't enter our homes right now because they're doing the investigation.
When police arrived at an apartment building on the 500 block of Twilight Drive, a woman was found severely injured from the shooting. Police say the victim's car was stolen by the suspected shooter, prompting a shelter in place for much of the area.
An alert was put into the Flock system, which then gave us updates immediately as those license plates were detected.
License plate readers, also referred to as Flock security cameras, tracked the victim's car near Joliet, where police caught up with the alleged shooter, who was behind the wheel.
We have them around the city here, on entrance and exit to the city for this very reason. Great use of police work and technology coming together and hopefully bringing this suspect into custody.
So here are some of the towns in the areas, our area towns that are already using this type of technology to fight crime or are in the process of getting LPR cameras. You'll notice Naperville, Downers Grove, Glen Allen, these are all surrounding towns. Wheaton, the DuPage County Sheriff's Office is already installing cameras, and you'll see a lot of different towns from DuPage County, as well as some of the other county sheriffs. Leave that up for a second if you guys want to just take a look. So some of the proposed locations we had talked about in regards to Lyle, and I think if you, obviously from seeing that last video from the news report, the importance is on entry and exit areas in town. So, and you'll notice multiple cameras for some of these locations. That's because of coverage-type stuff so that you can get, if there's multiple lanes of traffic, stuff like that. So Ogden, 355 and Maple, Ogden Avenue and 355, Route 53 and Warrenville Road, Route 53 and 59th, Naperville and Ogden. The only one I think we are maybe missing on there is College and, College Road and Sun Valley down at the southwest section of town. I think I apologize, that's not on there. That is what a map would look like with the ideal locations for the cameras. So the cost, the initial cost is $33,750, and that includes the year for the cameras, and then the reoccurring cost is $30,000. If that is it. Any questions I can take from the board? We also have a representative from Flock here who can answer any technical questions or anything like that.
What I'd like to do is start with public comment. Any public comment in the room here tonight? Not seeing anyone, anyone on Zoom? I know I received some input on social media, in person, phone calls, things like that, but I'll save my questions till we go around here. So let's start with board member questions. I'll start with Trustee Wins on this end over here.
Do you see any limit to camera technology ever not being beneficial? You know, like, what's the line for the average public person who believes Ben Franklin's statement of to sacrifice liberty for safety, you deserve neither? What is the line? Where do we stop?
Yeah, I mean-
Today, it's this camera reading license plates. Tomorrow, is it drone technology? And drones are getting smaller and smaller. Where do our civil liberties end? When Flock develops a different system, will we see in 10 years coming in and saying, well, you know what, we're just going to move license plates to the roof of your car, and we're going to have drones that can automatically follow around like that? I mean, these might border on the lines of conspiracy theory, but where's the line? Obviously, these are systems that are always going to protect citizens in some manner, but how much do they change us as a society in general? You know, I guess I don't even know what, how to get an answer from you for that. I want to just make those statements, I suppose. You understand the concerns that some might have?
Sure, absolutely. And, you know, it's like, when you entrust the police to do our job, you guys trust us with to carry weapon, to use it appropriately, you know, to use it justified. We take on that great responsibility. It's like, I remember when I was in the academy, they said things like, that's a tool on your tool belt that hopefully you never have to use, but you have to be proficient with it. This is another tool that we can use, especially with, like, some of the things we talked about. Obviously, we, I had a lot of emphasis on stolen cars and catalytic converter thefts, which are going up, okay? But there's, those are violent crimes as well. There's instances that's happening around here where the people are armed when they're being confronted.
Can I interrupt, just because I'm, just because I'm short on time?
No, no, I got you.
I want to cover a couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead.
What are the minimum type of crimes that can be used? Yes, I see it for homicide and stuff like that. I'm like, but when do we track a license plate because somebody hasn't paid child support, or somebody hasn't filed some other type of obligation, and this person says, oh, I'm going to work every day, and then they say, well, let's check the Flock cameras. Have you really left your residence?
We only use them for criminal matters. So any type of simple matters like that, like, we talked about cars that are getting broken into in neighborhoods from, you know, people who don't live within Lyle. We're looking to see when that car leaves and enters. Once it, once it leaves Lyle, we're not really tracking it with, it's seen when it goes.
Have there been any misinterpreted plate readings? Have people been followed thinking that they had just committed some crime, and all of a sudden, they're like, I have no idea what you're talking about, and we find out that there's plate readings? I haven't seen any statistics on mistakes. I assume that it's not infallible.
Yeah, but I mean, if like, if the end result is make a traffic, like, let's say, are we going like, a traffic stop happens as a result of information from a plate reader or something like that?
I'm saying, the PowerPoint shows the positives, but I didn't see how many times we've made mistakes, because we make mistakes.
Sure, yeah, we all-
Yeah, we all do.
Yeah, Trustee Wins, that's a great question, and I'll just address it. In our policy created by Lexipol, and it says, "The officer shall verify the response through our lead system before taking enforcement action." So the officers will receive training that if they do receive an alert from the camera that a stolen vehicle has entered the village, they can't just automatically see the car and stop it. They have to go through the necessary steps to verify what the license plate reader told them matches to what now their in-car computer tells them, and interpret that information to make sure that it's accurate.
Thank you very much. It also reminds me of an issue that we're going to be facing on a different item tonight when it comes to who has access to body cameras, and who can review them, and what gets deleted, and all that type of stuff. So does, do these Flock cameras currently, will they, will any of the legislation from the Safety Act affect the way these Flock cameras are being used currently?
No, because it's simply an investigative tool to trigger alerts. The officer still has their own, you know, interpretation of how they get the data and how they act on it. So these are just, as Detective Eckert said, these are just alerts, and it's a tool. It's not, we're not making actions based on-
Can I motion for extend?
I don't need time to extend. Thank you guys very much. I don't mean to sound critical, but I have very critical people asking me to be critical. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mullin?
So thank you for the presentation. It really did help answer a few of my questions already, so thank you for that. Can you help me understand a little bit about how this is managed between communities? You mentioned if something is, how is that networked? How is this one system that you guys can leverage?
If I may, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to present today, or your police to present today. The Flock Network-
Would you state your name for record?
Sorry about that. Hector Soliman Valdez from Flock Safety.
Thank you.
The Flock Network allows neighboring jurisdictions to share their cameras for purposes of investigations. Any searches that are performed per your policy and per our software requires a search reason. I believe in your policy, it states a case number or a reference number, so that's how you would search.
Okay. So when they're, how does the timing part of this work also? If somebody gets an alert, we're a small community, right? So it's hard to catch up with somebody possibly in the four minutes I might be in Lyle, traveling through Lyle. So how does, how does that work when there's something that pops up in Lyle? How would you guys activate to respond to it?
From a technical perspective, the alerts are fed to the MDTs or to desktops at the police station within 20 to 30 seconds.
Okay. And for you guys, like, how does that work for you guys to be able to be responsive?
Basically, it's telling the officers heads up, a known vehicle that's been involved in criminal activity has just entered the village, and we can start, depending on which camera it hits at, that's the area we're going to go to, or the area that we think it may be going to, the direction that it may be going to, and it just puts our officers on, they're already on high alert, but this just puts them on extra high alert, because now we have information that we can go forward with, that there's a known criminal element in the village. Let's go find this car and see what they're up to, and possibly chase it out of the village.
So the other, in going through some of the list of what you may be able to use this for, how often, especially the smash and grabs that we've had, how often is that car actually attached to the person committing the crime? So if the car gets put into, you know, the license plate is read and it gets put in the database and pops up somewhere?
It happens, it depends. It happens both ways. Sometimes they're using the same car. Sometimes it's a stolen plate, but a lot of times, all the different towns, like, recently we've had a car that has been all over DuPage County, and it's the same car. There's specific markings sometimes on the cars that we can, that go past the license plate, that we're like, okay, well, that car just switched plates or whatever.
Okay.
But we know that that's the car based off of a dent on the car or whatever. But like, but all the, those different departments are then sharing that information and saying, hey, this, this car that's involved in these catalytic converter thefts is, you know, we've seen it as well. It was here last night. It was in Vondale Heights. It was here, it's here. So.
Okay. So I did have a discussion today with someone who's got some awareness of this, and my understanding is that the state is a little bit hesitant to allow these in their right-of-ways. Have you guys run into that at all? Or I know when DuPage was identifying where to put theirs, they were placing them outside of state right-of-ways.
We're currently working on a process to permit cameras on Illinois DOT.
Is that just a permitting process that needs to be navigated?
It's a permitting process that needs to be navigated.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Just because we clearly Ogden and 53, 55, and 53, and everything is, all of our hotspots are states. Okay. I will say I have, I have reservations because it feels very big brother-y when I saw it. I also, at the same time, understand the usefulness and how this can really benefit investigations, especially considering a lot of our neighbors have it, and that network can really be useful going from town to town. So I'm going to need to, like, muddle that over still, but thank you very much for helping this. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Greco?
First, I want to thank the sergeant for his time putting this together. And again, this is per our request to see what we can do about crimes that have taken place. I have also received some comments back from our constituents regarding this in particular, and I think the term "big brother-y" is probably a good analogy. A lot of reservations regarding privacy and whatnot. And again, the presentation, PowerPoint presentation is very eye-opening. With that, I've got a small list of questions here, so I'll try to get through as quickly as I can. Neighboring metrics for success in solving crimes and what type? I know that there's a lot of communities there. I don't know how long they've had it for, but I'm just curious to know, you know, I don't want to say there's a payback to this, but have, you know, I don't know, how do you, how do you say that the investment, what you've done, has come on board? And are these other communities that have signed in, are they in operation, have been in operation for a while?
Yeah, so prior to the current role that I have at Flock, I was on the customer team, so I worked with a lot of the agencies locally. It's really hard to answer that question from a numbers perspective. Some communities do measure, you know, amount of guns recovered, you know, illegal weapons, drugs, et cetera, and put a number to that. As you saw in the presentation, returning a child to their mother, what's the price there? There's definitely different use cases and different ways to measure it. Hopefully, that answers your question.
It does. And perhaps the Police Department might be able to, I know that you share annual, or not annual, but weekly reports with us. This might be part of it to say, hey, this system, you know, solved this, this, and this type of crime?
No, you're right. I mean, I'm looking to see the statistics, to see the value in this. If we decided to move forward with this, this is not a five-year commitment. This isn't something that we're locked into forever. If we decide to go forward with this, and after a few years, we don't, aren't seeing the return on our investment, I'll be the first one that says, this is not working the way we anticipated. Let's exit. So we're going to be tracking the data very carefully for that reason.
Yeah, and I just want to make a point of comparison, and I apologize to the other trustees, who's probably going to require more time to ask some of these questions. But the red light cameras that we have in place right now, I know that some of that data can be used as well for, but again, it doesn't track the plate. Only you have to look, review the time period and maybe get a hit. It won't actually automatically give you a hit on the plate.
That's correct. So the red light camera is a completely different animal. It's only taking pictures when a person violates the white, you know, the white line and actually violates the red light. The cameras are recording, but it's not going to, it's an aerial shot, so it's not going to allow us to capture the license plate data, nor will it alert our officers when the license plate goes through that intersection. So apples and oranges in terms of our world. They're an investigative aid, but we don't depend on them as much as we would for license plate readers.
Yep. Perfect example, just to speak to that real quickly, is like, when we talked about one of the businesses on Ogden Avenue where multiple catalytic converters get stolen, the vehicle ended up going west to Yakley, and the camera picks it up there. And a detective was able to identify it there, and it led to, you know, multiple other towns. We cleared multiple other cases. We were able to solve ours. The guys came back the next night in Woodbridge and were chased, and eventually were stopped in Lyle. We were able to arrest four people because we got the plate that way. If the vehicle went east, we don't have anything. We have, we have kind of grainy video from the business, which gives us no plate, and the car is gone.
And again, I want to make a distinction that a red light camera, and its typical installation is probably about 40K for one location, whereas we're talking about 10 locations for about 30K. And again, serving a different purpose, but being more specific in terms of, you know, getting that capture. So, and again, it was mentioned earlier that it's only going to get hit based upon if you enter a plate that you're looking for. It's not tracking someone necessarily. And again, I was around in the 90s when, due to abuses with the current, and I don't know the name of the system you guys use that connects to the state and the county to track, to get license plate data, but each one of those are now registered. Before, anybody could just look up a plate. Now, similar to your process, there's an incident report every time there is a lookup for something, and then there's additional to going to the county as well.
Right. Yeah, we have, we would be requiring documentation or some sort of reason when the officers enter a license plate. It's not just for curiosity's sake. There has to be, we have safeguards in place to prevent that.
Okay. Do you need more time?
I absolutely do.
Can we motion to extend time?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, go ahead. Hearing none, go ahead.
Okay. Um, the agreement to share the data, um, is there any ownership or rights to the data itself?
The only, uh, person that can share the data is the department administrator with other, um, neighboring jurisdictions in the sense that they have to give permission for that jurisdiction to be able to have access. Um, we do not share the data ourselves, uh, or have access to it either.
Because it's not third-party? Like, you don't share a third-party?
Correct. There's no third, uh, third-party sharing. And to your earlier question as far as costs, um, I did want to mention that with us, we are full-service in the sense that that installation cost, um, it's, it's an annual cost where we come out, um, maintain the cameras, install them and permitting, um, all through that cost.
Related to that, related to that question, um, obviously anybody who signs on as a user in, earlier you just stated where the state stands, um, but are there any other county or, or federal agencies that are also users of this data, such as FBI or Homeland Security?
Uh, not, no, there is not. We share, we sell exclusively to law enforcement, uh, for this type of tool.
Okay. Um, you answered this question.
Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. You answered one of the other questions before. Um, are there other type of proprietary systems already in place besides your own? I know this is kind of a, a, a turnkey kind of installation or use of this product. Are there any other competitors that you have?
Yeah, there are other vendors. Really, one of the big distinctions is, we started off selling to the private sector to HOA's communities that wanted to have their own cameras. So that's why we're kind of a software-as-a-service model, turnkey as you, as you mentioned. Traditionally, these cameras were tens of thousands of dollars, similar to what you were mentioning with the, um, red light cameras.
Okay. Um, and you mentioned it does include and store the video up to 30 days and then it's deleted. Um, we talked about metrics. Okay, I think that's, that's all I have at this time. I appreciate, um, I appreciate your, your knowledge of, of the, um, the information. And again, we'll take it into consideration. Um, and that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sat?
Um, definitely in favor of, um, LPRs. Um, I think majority of the questions have already been asked and answered to my satisfaction. I mean, it's, I like the fact that we're targeting cars that are kind of stolen, that are on high alert. I, I really like the, the fact that they're, they're stripped of identity other than, you know, just bare minimum numbers and license plates. Um, I think what I'm missing is the fact that there's maybe a policy on who's responding, what, what the protocol is from our police department. Um, I think that, that should probably go hand in hand with the purchase of this. I think because, um, and I completely like the fact that Downers Grove has it, Naperville has it, and all these other areas already have it. Um, but for us to implement it, I, I really feel that we should, when presenting something like this, we should also have how we are going to address the policy, how that's going to change the training portion of it, what that's going to look like from our side, from the, for the police department. Um, the other portion that I would also really like to see is what the cap of this is, completely on board with your, um, you know, the local cell of your equipment, keeping the scale small, um, having a SaaS solution, love that. Um, maybe like a two-year, um, evaluation period and come back to the board. Um, we've put other software, other tools like this in place where we do put together a contractor for a two-year or three-year solution in place and we do reevaluate it. Um, I didn't see a cap like that. Maybe I just missed it? Did I? Okay.
No, it's not in there because this is pretty much a discussion just to kind of see if we have, you know, your authority to, to move forward, so.
Okay. Yeah, so I definitely do want to see a two-year cap, um, on so, on a discussion like this. Um, I think the question about what are we going to do with sharing this data with other units, um, again, really goes hand in hand with our policy and our procedure. Um, when we are sharing this across other units where, um, what do we do right now? Does that change, um, based on when a car is coming through that has stolen something outside? Again, I just want to know if that, if having a system like that already in place with an LPR, does that change our protocol? Does that not change our protocol? All those questions just come into play. Um, I also want to see the ugly, like, I, I love seeing beautiful pictures cover from the media. My heart goes out every single time I see things like that, but I also want to see the bad, right? Um, I, if there are any, I'm sure I could look it up, but I do want to see the bad. Um, there are known, um, incidents of this. I just didn't see any. I didn't have the time to research it, but the next time it does come back with the policy and the procedure, just so we can be aware of it, how do we target that? How do we, um, be proactive against it? That would be good to know. Um, also, from our unit, from our police department, who gets assigned to this, right? Um, I know you have, um, police officers that are watching a particular thing. Does everybody go out and watch this? Like, again, just that whole policy and protocol around this, right? Because for a red light camera, we have only one police officer that looks at it, correct?
Close. Uh, there's actually two or three who actually reviewed it. Pretty close.
But, but yeah, there's only a handful of people that are trained for that particular thing.
Correct.
Who, who does this? Because if it's a stolen thing, right, and if these alerts are going on, and I'm not saying that they're gonna go on forever and all the time, right? Who's gonna be reviewing this and what is that going to look like for the rest of the force? So again, I would love to see the equipment along with the policy and the protocol, so.
I'd be happy to share the policy with you all, so.
Thanks.
That concludes your, thank you. Uh, trustee Quitzel?
Thank you for the presentation. This, I'm, I'm convinced from the presentation and from some things that I have read that this is a valuable tool for law enforcement and I, I'm supportive of seeing the Lisle police have, have this tool in their toolbox as, as you point out. Um, it does, it is a, um, balancing act. Uh, I'll look at the national conversation about this. It's a balancing act between having a valuable tour, tool, and making sure there's no infringement on people's Fourth Amendment rights, their rights to privacy, or even their First Amendment rights. So, um, you, chief, referred to, I think you used the word, there are some safeguards in place, and I too would like to see this with an associated policy. So from the reading, the little tiny bit of reading that I have done, I, um, it, I learned that there are 16 states that have statutes that either directly or indirectly, um, govern these readers. Um, Illinois is not one of them. It does seem like, I, I think I read that the Illinois State Police do have them, I believe, um, but that Illinois does not have associated statutes. Um, it seems, it seems to be another case, such a, another one of these situations that so common where the technology is getting ahead of the governance of them. So I just, I want to have this tool, but I want to be, I want it used very, very carefully. Just, I like your analogy. You use guns very, very carefully. We need to use this very, very carefully. Um, an article I read referred to, um, four areas of concern. One of them is errors. And, um, it talked about, and, and you would address this, it talked about the possibility that a hot list, uh, is, is not up to date when, when there's a match and the need to go back and verify that. Um, it, and maybe you could comment on this. This talked about one audit, and I don't know where, I don't know any specifics about it, that referred to as much as a 37% error rate on actual reads. So, um-
If I may, um, I think that those are all great points as far as the technology and legislation around it. Um, that, um, particular article is about a legacy provider. Um, it's not Flock. Uh, one thing that, a couple of things that we've done to be ahead of the curve here is that 30-day retention. Uh, traditionally, that was not the case. The reason that Flock settled on that number is because it's enough time for police to perform an investigation, even if, let's say, folks are gone on vacation for two weeks, report the crime, they're still able to investigate. But it's not long-term so that it's, you know, gathering information for a long time.
But, but do you, do you have statistics for Flock about read errors?
Our, our error rate is less than 1%.
Okay.
Um, and then the important, uh, you know, distinction there is that, of course, this is a tool, so within the policy with your police department, if they receive a hit, still, there is a verification that must take place.
Okay.
So that's a, a very important piece of, of kind of how this would be in real life.
So, um, a couple of other of these, the national conversation, uh, policy concerns that are brought up, um, uh, privacy and data, it points to only, um, less than 1% of red plates are actually involved in a crime. And so that's part of going towards the importance of not keeping this data. And I saw in those 16 date, 16 states, um, retention timeframes of anywhere between three minutes and three years within between, you know, 60 days, 90 days, 150 days. So I'm glad to see the 30 days. Um, also about sharing, of course. Um, now, this one I thought was a good, then, our articles go on to suggest, you know, um, policy components, and this I thought was a good one. Um, may I please?
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed? Hearing none, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, that if, uh, that, that they have like layers and if there is a need to search historical records, that that would require a warrant. So I, I just throw, uh, again, this all points to having a thoughtful, thoughtfully constructed policy associated with it. Um, a, a number of the states specifically state that the records are excluded from public information. Uh, let's see.
Would you like clarification from the attorney?
Um-
She's chomping at the bit to check in on privacy.
Well, the privacy issue, um, if you're in a public place and the portion of your vehicle is visible, there, there really is no privacy, right? I mean, any private citizen can take a picture of you if you're in a public place on the public right of way. Um, I think what this does is indicate, you know, they aren't gonna be taking pictures inside the vehicle. You do have more privacy rights within the inside of your vehicle, but on the, on the outside, if it's visible, um-
You're on a public-
You're on a public-
Space, you know?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's also a recommendation to maintain audit logs. Um, so, uh, I think I've kind of, kind of reached the end of my comments. I'm wondering if the IML has a position or if they're, if they have contemplated trying to encourage the state to have a statewide governance of this. Uh, so I thank you for listening and responding and presenting very much.
Thank you. Trustee Duffy?
Getting to go like second to last helps a lot here. For the chief, for the database that is for the quote-unquote hot vehicles, how often is, how is that maintained by the state? Are there any issues that the state has? So clearly you're running a license plate against a master database that has identified that plate as a potential issue. Are there any known issues with that database itself?
The state list, um, is updated, I want to say, two to four times in Illinois a day. We ping it, so we extract that information, um, double the amount of times.
When you guys connect to it, how often do you run into issues with your connection? Because it's two databases talking to each other, is undoubtedly gonna run into, like, how do you, in other words, how do you validate that your connection is strong between the Illinois system and your system?
It's a, a file that is a soft pull, so the, it basically provides plate-
So when you pull that file, though, do you have a team that goes to the root database to come, to ensure validation? Because you're essentially ma, you're recreating it when you pull a file.
We are, uh, basically, when a vehicle, a license plate is identified to match one of the vehicles on the Illinois list, we are alerting the police department that that is a vehicle on it.
But are you, so my license plate gets read, is it getting compared to the list that you are pulling from the database or is it getting compared to the master database itself?
I, I would argue both. It's the same, right? So it's-
Well, then you have to explain to me the validation step between the list that you're pulling to the master database.
So I would explain it as downloading an Excel sheet, let's say, um, where all of the data that is on that sheet from the state list, uh-
So you download an Excel spreadsheet?
Layman's terms.
Layman's terms. And then you are using that as your root file for how you read license plates? How do you know that that Excel sheet that you have downloaded is identical to the master database? At some point, you guys have to do validation because that would be how you would ensure no errors. So there's gotta be validation within that step.
I can get you the specific, or provided to the city of the validation process, um, but again, it's a soft pull of the data. The important portion there is that, that is alerting the police of a potential alert, of an alert, right? But they-
Well, I understand the, and I apologize, I, we get like time and I, please don't think if I interrupt you.
No.
I'm not trying to. Um, I understand that process, but the key here is, is that where, how you compare the license plate to which actual data source is key. So technically, you're not comparing it to the master database, you're comparing it to a clone of the master database that you're pulling as a soft file, which then, which then has me concerned because that could lead to error rates that, and I, I'm chief liquor, I, I will respectfully disagree. I, I don't think, even if someone's, like, let's say someone has rented a car and that somehow is in the master database as a hot and it isn't, and they get pulled over, there are illegal, there are incorrect pull-over, and let me put it, phrase it that way, is not just 1% error rate. That is a citizen that has done nothing wrong, that has gotten pulled over, and I imagine even through a policy standpoint, you guys rightfully so will take a very protective approach in that situation, right? It's not just gonna be like, ah, he pulled Tom Duffy over for speeding. Um, so that's another, while yes, there could be an error rate here, that error rate can, does result in a more significant issue for the citizen versus just a normal stop. So before you continue, can I just ask for an extension so then?
Um, so we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Hearing none, go ahead.
So I, I guess my question is, um, or maybe a thought for you, is that your policy really has to talk about that because what happens in the scenario where that person is incorrectly pulled over? How does that open us up to lawsuits?
So that's a great question, and that actually happens occasionally today. Uh, there's a database that we use that's connected to the Illinois State Police. It's called Leeds. And we see this happen frequently, um, not to a bad mouth Chicago PD, but occasionally Chicago PD will have a vehicle that's entered into the database as stolen. Officer on regular patrol runs the license plate, it comes up as stolen. We all get in position and we do, if I only traffic stop on the vehicle, ends up being up that the vehicle was recovered. Chicago just never canceled the data, the vehicle out of the database. It's very unfortunate. We are often, you know, look like idiots when we're doing it, but we're going by base upon the data that has been provided. So the old garbage in, garbage out theory. So to your point, sure, that could happen. Um, we'll, we'll watch that carefully. We'll, we'll watch that carefully, we'll monitor it, and I'm hoping the frequency of that is extremely low. But if that ends up being a case where we're finding a high instance of that situation that you described occurring frequently, that'll be a conversation that we'll have with Flock and maybe a situation where we say, we no longer want to have this relationship with you, because we certainly don't want to pull over and make it look like we're harassing innocent motorists.
Right. If I could just comment on the liability, they have a setup verification through LEEDs as well as the Flock camera. If, if you have a reasonable basis for pulling someone over with the double, you know, with the verification that occurs on this, I, I don't really see liability just for the traffic stop. You are allowed to stop people and detain them until you can determine if there was a violation, if you have a reasonable basis for doing that. And I think if they add the LEED system as verification before they stop someone, that's fine. You know, and arrest might be a different issue, but just really the stop, I don't believe with those verification systems is going to create liability.
So my, thank you, attorney. That was an impressive list of towns around us, Naperville, Downs Grove, east and west of us. I, I guess my question is, I'm going to assume that most people that are committing these crimes have a very specific way in which they do it, but they, maybe they aren't going to who has Flock cameras and who doesn't. If they are, I mean, pretty smart, right? But I guess my question is, I don't see, then, if everyone else has these things around us, where is the true crime deterrent if Naperville and Downs Grove, how long have they had them for? What has been that impact that they've had on the crime? I mean, have they seen an increase in the number of investigations that have been closed quicker? Have they stopped more Cadillac converter thefts? Have they done any of the things that are here? Because I, I understand the tool aspect of this, but I mean, I have a large toolbox that has a lot of tools, but it doesn't do much, and it only gets used once in a while, and it just is sitting there. I worry then, from more of the privacy aspect, because still 30 days, you're collecting a license plate. Could you actually accidentally, in the photograph, take a photo of the person too? Is there any possibility ever that's never happened, where the technology has somehow taken a photo of the person that's in the car?
The cameras are positioned to capture the rear of the vehicles, so the machine learning is trained to use the license plate, the taillights, as identifying features. As you saw, that is the example of what footage looks like, it's not the passenger, you know, you don't see.
But you also collect, so there's two ways of looking at this. You collect all the data, everyone's license plate gets read, and then, as it's good, so you're not just collecting data on people, like, for example, red light cameras, which are, someone has done the violation. In this scenario, everyone that drives through the village of Lyle, I guess, now Downs Grove and Naperville, or any of those towns, their data's being collected, and since we all live here, it's not 30 days. It's 30 days for that first read, right? So if I drive from Naperville to Lyle every single day for the rest of my life, my license plate is housed within a database that is not just, like, it's housed within Flock's company and the state. So now you can see where I come from a privacy aspect of, it's a little bit different, it's, essentially, you have data that's being collected on people that's in a third party. Now, access to it's different, like, you explained how they access it. Yeah, I, I got some, this to me, you're going to have to prove more with the metrics for me to see actually where the towns have seen improvement before I would vote yes on this.
Thank you. First off, as a, as somebody who has unwittingly participated in a takedown of stale information on a, on a stolen vehicle, I can attest to bad information leading to, I wouldn't say bad, bad circumstances, just surprising circumstances, happened in a neighboring community, but it happened with a report in the city of Chicago on a company-registered vehicle. But the largest error rates that I've seen, just, probably just because of prevalence of license plate reading cameras, is, comes from the tollway, not, not for law enforcement purposes, but for toll collection purposes. And one of the biggest causes of error that I've seen is specialty plates, where the same numeric sequence or letter, alphanumeric sequence is followed by a designation for the, for the type of plate, i.e. Cubs plates, Bulls plates, Bears plates, antique plates, whatever, they, they give out the same numbers repeatedly. The Skyway has those issues, neighboring states have those issues. So how does Flock deal with, with that information? How do you vet out that the four digits that you're seeing include the specialty plate indication?
Our machine learning is taught to not only identify the digits, but also the type of plate, right? So it will know an Illinois plate versus a Kansas plate, a specialty plate versus a standard plate. It uses all that to cross-reference the information that's being provided.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd just like to make a clarifying statement here, that license plate reading technology has many, many different applications. We're only talking about one type of application here, that's a fixed camera location. It's not a camera you might lose, use for parking enforcement, it's not a camera that you might use in a handheld situation, or a camera that's mounted to a police car that does the actual data entry into the LEED system, is that correct?
Correct.
So, so these fixed cameras are not actually reading to LEED on a live basis, they're reading a secondary database that's extracted from LEED and then used on the Flock end. Am I understanding that correctly?
If I'm understanding the question, well, this, the way that it works, it has the information from LEEDs. The camera sees a vehicle, reads the plate. If it matches a plate that's identified in LEEDs, then it would alert the local law enforcement.
But it's not doing that through LEEDs live, it's doing that through an extracted, downloaded database that's derived from LEEDs twice a day.
Yeah, so LEEDs itself is only updated several times a day. We ping that twice the amount of time that it, the times that it's updated.
And then to a question of who has access to the camera info, this is a question I've, I've pondered for a long time, is with the neighboring communities that have cameras, what I heard earlier tonight was that it's up to the chief law enforcement official of that community whether to share data with a neighboring community, correct?
Correct.
It's not a license purchase through, through Flock to get access for others' data, it's, it's getting permission from that other community.
Exactly. The town is the sole owner of the data and decides, through your law enforcement department, who they will share with, within the system.
So is it possible, then, for, for our community to work with those surrounding communities that have this camera system set up as a larger barrier, point of entry, that if a, a vehicle is traveling southbound from, from north of us, and we have permission to share data from Wheaton, that, that that data is getting to us much quicker than, than at our border, but it's already coming from established infrastructure?
I can let the, so I think what you're asking, so let's take Naperville, for example, let's take the west end of town. So Naperville has cameras that are, I'm not sure if they're up yet, or they're going up in covering vehicles coming into Naperville, on, at Ogden and at Maple. They don't have them coming in, they don't have them leaving Naperville, coming into Lyle, so we can save like almost, a, two intersections that may have required four cameras from us. Now, if we share with Naperville, now we, they require two from us. So, because Naperville has that exiting covered, we'll, we have the entry covered.
Now, how about broadening that circle to the outside perimeter of Naperville and? Move for an extension. Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was?
So, so broadening that, that umbrella of coverage to the outside perimeter, the far perimeter of Naperville, so if somebody enters Naperville, an offender enters Naperville from the far west side, that we're then given notice that potentially there's somebody...
Leaving Lyle?
Not, not leaving Lyle, but entering Naperville and potentially could be going through Naperville and into Lyle.
I can answer that question. So the way that I, and I'm sorry for not giving a local example, but in the Bay Area, Danville, San Ramon are communities that are adjacent to each other. They will many times use the system as one, because vehicles that may be alerting that San Ramon, that are, are stolen vehicle, will be going northbound into Danville. At that point, Danville PD will be ready to intercept that vehicle once it enters their jurisdiction, and then vice versa. That's one use case that I've seen. I think it's kind of where you're going with that.
And, and that's capable with the system, but the participation is completely at the, at the discretion of each of the independent law enforcement entities?
Exactly. They would have to, an administrator would have to agree to share hot list alerts with each other.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone outside of law enforcement have access to the data? Private investigators? Anyone else?
No. The data is only, the only person that can share the data are people, are the system administrators themselves.
I realize that. So let me turn to the attorney. Legally, does anyone else have any access to the, to the information, being it's a document, being it's a record created?
From, from Flock's perspective, we do not share the data with any third party.
Right. Well, there's no state statute addressing it like there is body cameras and red light cameras. I do not believe it would be subject to information under FOIA, because it would be considered personal information.
But being that there's no...
I mean, I can check with the PAC.
No legislation and it's emerging technology, there's probably been no case law or anything?
There's no, there probably isn't any case law, but, you know, I'd be happy to get, you know, just an informal reading from the PAC as to what their thought is on it.
Okay.
I think it would be exempt, but.
I just want to know, and I think the board should know whether we have an obligation by creating a record.
Right.
Either, either for minimal data storage, minimal period of time.
Right.
Or what the release is, and whether there is anyone that is, that actually can compel us, even if we said no, could compel us to release it.
Right.
I.e., federal law enforcement or anything like that, if, if we didn't feel comfortable with it.
Well, I mean, somebody can get a subpoena for any data, even if it's exempt from FOIA, but the judge would have to agree that it was necessary to give it. It wouldn't be just this, it would be any type of record that we had.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think that covers my, my questions. I still have, I, I think data retention is the biggest obstacle in my mind. I, I see the purpose of, say, parking enforcement, I see the purpose of on-the-fly, on-the-road data entry to free up officers' hands, so if a camera mounted to a, to a vehicle can read plates in front of them instead of having to type in manually, I see the value of that. But the concern I have is, is data retention, and I want to find out more about data, data retention requirements, what's the minimum effective period? Can the, can the mounted cameras just do live reporting and not retain any data? Is that a possibility as we ponder a, a policy where, where it's just a live warning, but not so much on the investigative end, looking back at a built-up history? So those are, those are thoughts and questions in my mind. But with that, what I'd like to do is go around, do we need another round to go, roll the dice?
I have a couple.
Okay. So let's go back to trustee wins and...
I do, but I also was wondering if maybe we could just come to a consensus that we need to all get some more information and have the, this just put on another night for the, for committee of the whole, and just continue the discussion another time? We've got several other items to discuss.
We do have a long agenda, and, and we couldn't, we can do that, do we have?
Because I can certainly go around again, I could go around five more times, frankly.
Do we have, do you have a means of getting your questions out, or do you want to submit questions via email to, to those involved?
Well, I was just thinking that we could get, I, I believe one of the public comments that wrote in said something about an opposing view, somebody that, that isn't trying to sell a product to us, you know, maybe we could hear from something like that. I'm, I'm reading on the ACLU's website, that like, it's a startling picture of technology deployed with too few rules that are becoming a tool for mass routine location tracking and surveillance. As technology spreads, the ACLU calls for the adoption of legislation and law enforcement agency policies adhering to strict privacy principles to prevent the government from tracking our movements on a massive scale. Maybe we could get some more information from the ACLU before we go around and round and don't have all the information.
May I jump in? Maybe we can, I email a few of our questions, I, to no surprise of you, I'm going to ask for the validation stuff, but getting that information would be helpful, probably, and then when we have that conversation again, even if it doesn't happen the next, I mean, if it does take a little bit of time, very important topic and all that. I would be fine with that.
I just have a, like, two quick questions.
Around in order, just real quick, and trustee?
So if, you know, we bring this back and talk about it again, I would like to see, has, have any of our neighbors, anyone on that list implemented this already? Sounds like Naperville's installing them right now. So if, you know, like, there are some of our close neighbors, would love to hear kind of how that, what their experience has been so far, that would be really cool to have. And then I agree, actually, on the, the privacy and the FOIable aspect, it was one of my follow-ups, is my husband worked, you know, worked in IT, and he did a project for OnStar, and the OnStar operators would talk about how they would have people call and be like, can you tell me everywhere my car was yesterday? And it was like wives, like, making sure their husbands weren't cheating. So like, I could totally see people like trying to FOIA this stuff to find out where their car was. So, I mean, it's just silly things like that, that I think of, but it would be really helpful to understand the FOIA aspect of it. And I'll leave it at that.
Trustee Greco?
I think it was made clear before that, this is not a mass origin/destination study, that this is in fact, you're collecting data and it's only being mined with a, with a specific intent. It's, it's not tracking people, it's taking information, but that information isn't, you know, being utilized until, you know, you either have, and again, I want, I like to clarify too, I, I'm not a law enforcement official, but I can see that there's two different avenues or paths that you would take. Either you know a plate, or you're trying to identify a vehicle at a, at a specific point in time. So it's either you know it, or you don't. When you know it, I think that's, you know, you have a plate that's stolen, or you've got something that, you know, is, is a specific lead on something, it could be an Amber Alert, it could be stolen vehicle, it could be whatever. That's one thing.
I'm sorry, is this my time? Like, are we going around again?
No, just, we're going around.
Because if we were going around again, I definitely don't want to yield my time to everybody on the panel.
I, I yield my time back to trustee wins, if you wanted to give this time back, and I'll, and I'll continue my discussion.
I think the interest was in trying to hurry this roundup and, and get this scheduled for, for further conversation.
Like, what else do we, like, quick things that we need to have in our next discussion?
You're entitled to your full five minutes. But if we want to go quickly, the quicker we go, the quicker we get through and we...
Okay, yes, let's, I, I'm just looking for a reason to, to, to give some information to staff to put on for the next, so, so we can continue the discussion again.
There were multiple trustees with questions, so we're going one by one to get those vetted out.
Forgive me for interrupting, trustee Greco.
Oh, no, no, no problem, I, I understand. If, if it didn't seem like your time was properly yielded, so, I understand. I also would like to say that I agree with what you're saying in terms of looking at this again, I don't think we should make a decision on it tonight. I'm just clarifying some points that I, that I thought I saw in this, this will be my last go-around on it. So again, I just wanted to point out that some of the questions that you had, I think, were answered, and specific to, you know, it's not a mass origin/destination study. I mean, you can, the information can only be pulled if there's either a plate, or if there's an incident that takes place. So in the case, and this is where I have another question, if you have an incident that takes place, let's say something happens at 4:00 in the morning, and what would it say, let's say, a Cadillac converter theft. converter theft that happened the previous day and someone calls it in. You're going to go back to what cameras in that system, you know, there's not a lot of traffic at four in the morning. That's going to help with your search, but you're going to have a lot of plates. So, would you compare what plate may have been different from the previous night before? I mean, this is investigation studies. These are things that we're really not privy to. It could be somebody local. That could be, you know, it doesn't matter comparing it to a 24 hour period before or not, whether it's somebody in or out of the area, it doesn't matter. But at least you might get a correlation maybe between another incident where there was another theft somewhere else. And now you've got, am I correct to say that you've got like a database of plates that were in a specific area at a specific time and you're, and you're collecting information and then comparing it to those other incidents that may have occurred? And then that might be the correlation that you're looking for. Again, it's just a piece of information. It's not identifying anyone. It's simply identifying a vehicle that was there in and about that time that something took place, maybe in multiple locations. Does that make sense? Okay. So, again, I'm not, I'm not a detective, but I kind of understand what you're looking for.
Like it generates like possible leads.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
To be followed up on, you know, and, you know, like, like you said, for using catalytic converter thefts, I know we've said it a lot tonight, but that, using that as an example, usually for the most part, it's multiple towns, it's multiple areas, whatever.
You're not, you're not looking up people's private information. You're simply taking a plate that, that's in a list, like an Excel list, comparing it multiple times to other incidents and you may have a hit then that occurs. I mean, how unlikely, how likely is it someone that, you know, that you have a vehicle that's in the same place where three different locations and three different towns where catalytic theft has occurred? That's where you're going to get a hit or an ID. It's not identifying who's driving the car. It's not identifying the person. It's not tracking where they're going. It's only tracking it to a criminal activity. And again, I kind of go back to what you mentioned before. It's not a mass origin, and it doesn't mean that everybody's plate is being tracked to where they're going from town to town to town. It's not what it's about. Again, it's, it's, you know, for the things listed and for criminal activities. And they had mentioned incidents where it was, you know, if your vehicle tag had expired or something like, it's not for, that's not criminal. So, it's not going to be used for nefarious purposes of minor infractions. It can be used for something criminal. Somebody got hurt, somebody got killed, somebody got amber alert, something got stolen, criminal activity. So, again, I wanted to make that clarification. So, again, I had a question regarding how LPR requests for data is processed. I think I've kind of, kind of answered in a little bit more detail as to, and you've confirmed that. So, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sadat.
I think I've, just recapping on a couple of things, the policy, the procedure, bringing it back the next time, signage, I think I didn't mention that earlier. Where the location of these cameras are. I know we always talk about having a red light camera signage. I saw your other, kind of some of the other towns that had something like this. There was always a sign or some kind of additional signage posted. Every time there's additional signage, all that sign pollution kind of thing always comes into play. Any chance that you can also bundle everything together with bringing it back to the board, location of these cameras on a pole, if there's signage requirements that usually go with it? Also, just a clarification, the trigger is only if the vehicle is stolen. That's the only time that it gets triggered, not like an automatic license plate reader all the time. It's stolen, triggered, that's when the notification goes out. So, just, I just need some kind of email or some kind of verbiage around that because I'm, I'm looking at your website on the Flock Safety and there's a lot of other things that you guys offer that just doesn't go hand in hand with what's being kind of directed to us. So, something very specific to what the solution is that you guys are giving to us, our policy and procedure from our police department. And then the last thing is when we're going to bring it back to the board for evaluation, whether it's a two year agreement or a three year agreement, something like that. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Quetzal.
I do think that this can be done, but to state the obvious, it needs to be done carefully so people don't feel their Fourth Amendment rights and any other rights are being trampled on. That's obviously critically important and there's a, a lot of good guidance out there. I think necessarily any policy that we consider adopting should include audit logs and routine regularly scheduled audits of the program. I did see among these little narratives I found for the 16 states that do have statutes about it, six of them refer, have language referring to the data is not subject to disclosure under the Public Information Act. So, that does seem to be an important thing and I look forward to what the attorney finds out on that. I thank you all for your ongoing efforts to be a wonderful and efficient department as we're all proud to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Duffy.
So, I think the validation is one. I have a question about the 30 day thing. What law, both either national or state requires, like is there something that saying like you have to have it for 30 days and then gets deleted or is that a company policy?
That's Flock stance. Nationwide, there was a lot of departments or a lot of states where the retention was a lot longer. We feel that that is a good enough time for an investigation, but then answers those privacy concerns of, you know, long term surveillance. Enough time for, for investigation, but again, not long term surveillance.
So, this isn't a comment towards Flock, but that's another thing that concerns me. It's essentially we are, what if Flock leadership 10 years from now says we want to hold on to her for 10 years? There's no law that protects the citizen from that information being held on to and that, that's another thing that concerns me here.
Your contract, it's in your contract that that's what you're agreeing to, the 30 days. So, we wouldn't be able to revisit that without changing your contract. And from, from the, from our perspective, there are agencies where they require a longer retention policy. That's actually an additional cost. So, we don't have an incentive necessarily to go beyond that.
And you're cloud based technology, right?
Yes, it's AWS.
And you, I assume that there are plenty of software engineers that have access to the, the hardware because, you know, both from, sometimes you have to work onsite, but then you're also doing updates regularly to your systems. So, all of these cameras are, like what kind of protections, let me, when you come back, identify for me, what protections do I have as a consumer that doesn't prevent, you know, a few people from accessing all of these cameras? Because they're going to be housed within you and that is something that has happened. I know Ring had this issue where they accidentally gave access to all of their Ring cameras to their employees once. So, this is not something that has not happened. This is something that's really has happened. And I would like to know more about your security internally that prevent abuse or misuse of your hardware that's installed.
And that's a question to be answered at a later date. Okay. Yeah, I'm looking forward to continuing the conversation if we can. Just to clarify about data storage, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, you mentioned that your, your standard is 30 days for retention, but you've had communities that stipulate anywhere from 36 hours to three years, I believe, if you, if I remember correctly.
Not 36 hours, but there, there are communities that stipulate a year, for example.
Can it be stipulated for a shorter period if that was a policy that this board came up with?
It can. Again, you know, we defer to your, to you all and to your law enforcement agency. We strongly suggest for investigative purposes that that is that sweet spot that both protects civil liberties, but provides a useful tool.
Thank you. I just want the, the board to under, to understand that. So, I, I could see continuing to add this to committee of the whole and continuing the conversation, see what questions we can get asked. Our next meeting won't be till middle of September. So, so it's a good long time to get questions out there. Questions can't be answered via email back to us, but it can prep us for the next conversation, the next committee of the whole.
Did we just put drinking establishments on the next committee of the whole meeting as well?
Yeah.
So, we're going to have drinking establishments and this camera.
Potentially have a lot of, a lot of things.
Maybe we should move this a little bit further down the line. I mean, like I'd really like to, to see an opposing view, or presentation or something.
I would imagine within four weeks, we can get an opposing view.
You're going to, you're going to schedule somebody to, to come in and give us a...
What we can do is reach, reach out to them and see with, see what their first availability is. But I'd like to continue to...
So, we won't have, they won't come back until we have an opposing view though. We're not going to schedule this on the committee of the whole until there's somebody that, that can give us the negative ramifications of something like this.
I would like to keep an open mind and see what questions come in and see what answers are available and see what progress we can make on a conversation. I mean, we had six or eight meetings about backyard chickens. I would imagine we're going to have many conversations about this. So,
Okay.
I don't, I don't see the point in forestalling it. We have, we have other things on tonight's agenda that actually affect the end of the year and the beginning of the new year, which cameras of this type might, might, you know, be required for.
So, the next time at the committee of the whole meeting, this isn't going to be, that's not going to be our final topic on this. This won't be sending to village board following that. That's all my concern is. There's a lot to discuss and I don't want to be rushed through it.
Yeah. No, that's fine. We'll, we'll take it as the board feels comfortable.
Thank you.
So, so that's, that's how we'll proceed and we'll go from, continue on and go, go from there. Okay? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Next item on tonight's agenda is the establishment of a Lisle Public Arts Program. Would village manager, please introduce this topic.
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is a continuation of a discussion related to a public art plan and program that has been previously discussed by the village board following the last committee of the whole agenda. Staff was directed to establish a draft framework for a public arts plan and a blueprint for a public arts advisory committee. Staff using a few local programs, the city of Elgin in particular, with intermingling of items from the village of Deerfield as well. Before you this evening is that draft framework and outline, including the objective of the plan, types of art, proposed artwork locations, information about the committee, the funding, project guidelines, process for application and selection, as well as village support for this initiative. Staff is, is, is open and ready for any feedback and revisions that the board may have. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. We'll start conversation with trustee Duffy to my right.
Really nothing for me. I think it looks like a good starting point. So, I'm good.
Thank you. Trustee Quetzal.
I appreciate all the effort that has gone into this. I have a couple of suggestions just to make the, make it, the policy a little more nimble and able to accommodate more creativity. In section two, the type of art, I would definitely add performance art to that list. But then I would also add at the beginning of the list, excuse me, the word including. In other words, that, all types of art including and then have the list in case somebody has a creative idea that does not fall into one of these categories. Section three, which I, which talks about the locations, I would also add the word including before the list in case some, again, to allow for creativity of other ideas. Section five, where it talks about funding, it says the budget will be $15,000 annually. I think actually we would consider this at budget time every year to see what for us, any specific coming year might be appropriate. The board at any time might consider that the amount should be increased, for example, or maybe decreased depending. I just, I would, I would say the current year budget is 15,000 and will be considered with the annual budget wording of that kind. And then I, I just think that section nine should clarify one way or the other, this is village support, should clarify one way or the other if these villages, cost of this village support is intended to be part of the 15,000 or whatever the annual budget is or not. Those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sadat.
Thank you so much for putting this together. Couple of things, the, I don't, I don't envision landscaping part of art. Landscape is, I would recommend taking landscaping out. I would also recommend taking performance art out. They're just not permanent installations and they would require a lot of maintenance. And if maintenance is part of the annual budget, that would require a lot of maintenance policy. And that is something that I don't think we actually built into this policy document. So, if that's what we're looking to do, then I don't necessarily see that happening with this public art plan. I'm willing to hear what everybody else has around the dice, but again, performance art is temporary and same. Landscape is very much maintenance type of work, murals, sculptures, things that are more permanent in nature, I think is very, very apropos for what we're proposing for the public art plan, especially for the first go around for $15,000. I think that makes sense. The second part, including for the location, I think anything else that people want to do outside of the murals, the sculptures, if they have other ideas to pitch them, I think that would be cool if they wanted to do that. The public right of ways for the locations is really interesting too. But if they wanted to do something in the private portion to maybe even bring that up to us as well, that would probably be a conversation that they could even bring up to this board. So, that was, that was my feedback. Other than that, I think it looks fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Greco.
To some of the other points made earlier, I agree that, that performance art in landscaping isn't what, isn't our goal or our function. I mean, that always should, of the, of the, of this, what we're trying to put together, I think that always should be a priority for any public works project that's put in place and, and that sculpture should be part of that. I think we're really looking for the mural, sculptures, paintings and drawings, whatever it might be. But I want to make a clarification that any type of art that you put in, nothing's ever permanent. But we are trying to make the effort at least to make it as long term as we can. So, but I agree that, that landscaping and mimes, that's not really what the performance art is necessarily, what I think we should be going for. Plus, it's kind of a fluid thing too that could change at any, any given moment, whether performance art or landscaping. One of the things, and I, I kind of looked through this and I know that we had talked about, and I think this is very well put together. I'm, I'm probably just going to say, yes, this is a great first draft that we have here. Let's make it happen. But I'm just looking for clarification on how this would be administered. If maybe staff has any, any thoughts on that? Because I, I see there's a, there's a committee that will be put together. Will there be some type of staff liaison to that? And will they be the one, who will that liaison be and, and how will that get presented to the board?
There would be a staff liaison that individual... There would be a staff liaison. That individual or position hasn't been determined yet, but that staff liaison would work with the committee to finalize a process for submittals, an evaluation of those submittals, and to bring that recommendation back to the village board for consideration.
The answer is my question. Thank you so much. Trustee Mullin.
So, I really like where this is going, the direction we're going, and I'm interested in moving this forward. I had two quick comments. Totally agree with trustee Quetzal. I actually had almost exactly the wording that she said on the budget item of her, you know, reference this year's number and that'll, you know, to be determined for future budgeting years. And then in section eight for selection criteria, I'd like to see something in there also added around alignment to Lyle's strategic vision and any goals set forth in the request for applications. So, that...I think that should be an important selection criteria, that if we're putting forth, hey, we want it to be focused on this this year, that we need to make sure that that alignment is strong and that will help kind of narrow the pool, I think, also. That was all I had.
Thank you. Trustee Wins.
Quickly, I think, performance art, I understand Kathy's direction with that, but I think that can be fulfilled with events and other things that are already there. I had a question about funding. I would wanna...I would hope that...I wanna discourage the committee from feeling the need that they would have to spend $15,000 annually, and if they didn't, that they might lose funding for the following year or something to that effect. So, I wanna...I don't exactly know what that language would look like, but I think that's something that people who have passion about this project should really consider. You don't want to see somebody say, well, if we don't spend this, then you might choose some art that you wouldn't necessarily have chosen if you would've waited until the next year to where you could accumulate a little bit more funding. I'm also assuming, and you have to forgive me, I have been absent for the last couple committee of the whole meetings. I tried to review some of it, but it's been difficult to catch back up. Have you guys discussed fundraising other than these grant programs? These are accounts that would hold funding, so you wouldn't be limited to this $15,000 amount, correct? Okay. And as far as public input goes, would there have to be public hearings? Like, if suddenly you're going to install in downtown Lyle a steel-welded structure that was large and might take up space, would it just be this committee that would decide that this was happening, or what's the process after that? Would it have to...
The way the committee would make an evaluation and make a recommendation to the village board, but I would assume for the first couple, it would come advanced from that public arts advisory committee to a committee of the whole, and then to final approval to legislative approval at a board...at a future board meeting.
Okay. Everything looks good to me. Thank you. And nice work, everybody.
Thank you. The committee was approved at the last village board meeting, correct?
The framework of a committee, yes.
Has the committee actually been...the committee information been posted on the village website?
It's not yet, no. There still needs to be a revision to the boards and commissions application to include that and direction for a call for applicants.
I'd like to get a call out as soon as possible. There's been some people interested. They just have nowhere to apply, so.
Right. So, staff will go ahead and polish up the board and commission application and get that out there and make special note of that if you want to, Mayor, if you want to see that as a special call for interested applicants.
Sure. Sure. Appreciate that. I'm gonna try to follow the state guidance, even though we're not state statutory under this program. I'm gonna try to follow the state guidance, and I think landscaping is a very real artistic endeavor, whether it's hanging gardens, whether it's what we do at the tollway interchanges. The Arboretum is a primary example of artwork in landscape. It's an entire garden, so there's great interest in that. And I do have...I received a call the other day and continue to call regarding a performance art group that's interested in taking up residence in Lyle if we can make it work out. So, there's...and the biggest thing I wanna do is encourage kids to get involved in art where they're not seeing it as much maybe on a daily basis at school. So, looking forward to all sorts of programs, but I think that performing arts and landscaping are vital to this. I think also acquisition of existing art needs to be mentioned. I don't know that it's discouraged or prohibited. There's nothing, no language in that regard, but I think it's also a great opportunity to procure art that already exists, possibly at a very favorable cost. So, there's a great opportunity here, but that's what I'm looking forward in.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask just about the landscaping, just so I can understand what you're picturing? Like, would you consider something like landscape art, like the overpass of 88 over 53 going into the Arboretum, where they have like the molded leaves and stuff like that on that structure?
I don't know that I would consider that.
Is that landscape?
It's art. I don't know if I'd call that landscape art. The Ogden Avenue Bridge over Route 53 has a creative artistic element to it, which is a change order. Typically, the way I would look at it is if it requires a change order from the entity that's putting the structure up, i.e. if 88 is being built and we want a decorative bridge on 88, we would be responsible for the change order for that bridge. That's the artistic element of it. It's not structural. It's not functional.
So, that's not landscape, though. That's more...
No, no, no. And I wouldn't describe it as landscape. I...
Decorative does not equal art.
Yeah. So, landscape is like plants and like a flower motif built around, like a butterfly.
I can give you an example. In Rockford, for a great many years, at the Seneshipi Gardens, they had a flower clock, which was...it had...it was a working clock, and it was large, but it was all planted with flowers. There can be some maintenance issues with it. One of the things, if you decide to do that, is you'd wanna have a proposal from a group that was gonna maintain it. For example, the Men's Garden Club in Rockford maintained that part.
But you believe that qualifies as landscape art, then?
I believe it qualifies one way or another as art, and that's why a strict definition of art is kinda...it's examples of, but not all-inclusive. It may be other things. And so, if we do decide to submit a change order for an architectural element, for a decorative element, those are all artistic. A concrete cast may not be thought of as artistic, but a pottery cast is. Pottery is artistic.
So, would this program...would like...would this program cover something to the effect of, like, let's say you wanted to create a better image of the bridge here in Main Street?
Sure.
And somebody proposed welding up some sort of a structure that created the same imagery of that arch?
Can I have a motion to extend time?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Go ahead.
Would somebody applying to build that type of a piece of art that would just put an end cap basically on a deteriorating piece of concrete, would that be something that would be discussed in this program?
I would certainly.
I mean, I feel that...it's my understanding that something like that would...
Yeah. I mean, there's challenges inherent to that. The last meeting, if you didn't catch it, one example was given. There was a minor beautification attempt at the Burlington Northern Bridge over Route 53 years and years ago, and it was just vinyl stenciled letters that said "Lyle," right? But it matched the motif of the Ogden Avenue Bridge, brown paint, earth tones, and then "Lyle" stencil down there. But the vandal-resistant paint that's used by the railroad to protect the steel bridge beams won't let anything adhere to it. So, within weeks, it fell off. So, there's challenges of what do you secure to? What rights do you have on railroad property?
Sure. Yeah. I just wanted to see if this was like strictly individual art structures or if this is something that could be applied to all sorts of infrastructure, however somebody was creative enough to do so.
If we had the Picasso structure over Main Street in front of the bridge, or if we had landscaping, quite frankly, in front of the Main Street Bridge that gave it a better look than the concrete look, to me, that's all artistic improvements of our environment, whether that's from the north, from the south. I mean, there's intrinsic challenges with that bridge, and it falls under our domain.
I think I share some of the concerns about the landscape language, but I also don't think that it's gonna come up, because the village public works this so much landscaping already. I don't think it's gonna interfere and...
Can I make a motion to, like, hold, like, this five-minute rule where we can just have a dialogue about this, just for this one topic?
Yeah. We can suspend the rule.
Yeah. Thanks.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
That's all my thoughts on it for the time being.
So, that was...so, will we...do we start with trustee Duffy on this one?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah. I think for me, when it's something like this, I would just cast a wide net. I didn't have an issue with trustee Quetzal's additions of the performance art and the landscaping. I think at the end of the day, we're gonna get people on the committee that are gonna vet these ideas. They're also gonna come to us or get to vet them. So, I'd rather have that widened up and then kinda see where it comes, and we can always refine that later date.
Thank you. Trustee Quetzal.
I think the ensuing discussion has supported the wisdom of my suggestion to include the word "including" to capture...to allow for as much creativity as people come up with.
Thank you. Trustee Sadat.
Yeah. I think we definitely need to have more inclusion, especially around purchasing and repurposing of existing arts that already may be already out there. You know, we talked a little bit about maintenance policy. We talked a lot about purchasing policy, and if landscaping is the way that we wanna go with this, if that's what the committee is suggesting, you know, they should come to the village board with how they're gonna maintain it, who's gonna maintain it, and what the longer-term process of that's going to be, because that's...oof, that's gonna be a feat to take on. That's definitely going to be a challenge. But I really like how this is headed. Yeah. I like how this is going. And I think last time, you know, I don't give enough credit to the mayor, but, you know, I may not say this enough, but the mayor did bring up Cafe de Moda. He did bring up the Lyle Savings Bank, both of which were projects that I took on pre-pandemic, where I did bring in the artists to showcase their art. And even to this day, you know, working with the Lyle Park District, they're bringing in art, and whatever happened, some of them got sold, some of them still exist over there. It's hard for artists, whichever way you are and however you're getting your medium out there and however you're challenging yourself. Thanks so much for recognizing that artists and the artist community needs this and needs the support. So, for you to even bring up hanging art in the public buildings, you know, this is great. I'll...if you're ready for it, I know tons of artists, especially a 25-year-old who is a Lyle student, was a Lyle student, who graduated, really has no job, she's ready to work, but has been just painting left and right and is waiting for somebody to display her art, and that's her only means of income at this point. You know, showcasing people like that and making sure that she's able to pay for her hospital bills, she's able to put a roof over her head just by selling her art pieces, that means a lot. So, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Greco.
I know we've gone round on this, and it's good, because we're kinda vetting out where we wanna be with this, but I'm of the opinion, if it's alive, it's not necessarily the art that I think we should include in this. I think we're conflating architecture, landscape architecture, and performance art. Again, I'm not looking to support a performance art group that's outside of the village. I'm looking to support the very artist that's in our town, and I think...
I agree.
I think that we're watering it down by including...or we can just name this thing if you want, the Village of Lyle Public Art and Landscape Plan, or we can have a separate committee on landscape. But I'm looking at this strictly from what I think is a traditional artist. And, you know, there are professions out there that is a professional landscape architecture. I'm not looking to support the professional landscape person so much. I'm looking to support local art. We don't have...we talked about identifying art, and I would not be in support of live performance art. I would not be in support of, you know, the landscape unless it's part of a separate policy or plan. But right now, I think we're trying to lift art off the ground. I'd actually would consider, again, this is 15K is an initial budget, and hopefully it'll grow from there. But again, I don't wanna add any more to it, so that's where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that there are a lot of amateur gardeners, artistic gardeners. I think the Lyle Women's Club would argue that Garden Gate is a fantastic opportunity to see art in a...
But it's not part of that permanent art that I think we're necessarily looking for. You know, again, it has a tremendous amount of maintenance associated with it. It's putting more time and expenditure on public work staff and village staff. I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for a permanent piece of art. I'm looking for a mural. I'm looking for a statue. I'm looking for a painting. I'm looking for using this venue to post that art in our lobby or just outside the lobby. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for borrowing coves from somewhere else, if it's art somewhere else, but I'm not looking at flowers or plants. I'm sorry. That's separate from what I think and consider art, if it's alive. I do not believe it should be part of this policy. I think it waters it down. So, just leave it there.
Thank you. Trustee Mullin.
I could see either argument for performance art and alive art, like pure decoration, landscape architecture. I totally agree. It doesn't belong in this. I think, and this might be something to look at the selection criteria for the program. I have no problem with it being included, but I think it's gonna have to meet a really high standard and a really high bar to meet the selection criteria to do better than a lot of the more traditional art pieces that we're, I think, have in mind for this program. Like, I think if someone proposed a mural and someone proposed a pretty garden, the garden's not gonna be able to compete. So, it would have to be something extraordinary, and in that case, I'm wide open to hearing about it, right? But I think the way the selection criteria are written, that I think it's properly going to favor the art that I think trustee Sadat and trustee Greco, that you're envisioning very much, and that's very much where my vision has been as well.
Trustee Mullin, I'm just afraid we're only going to be shown one selection at the end of the day. I'm afraid, and again, I'm afraid based on what I've seen in the past, that we'll only be shown one choice, and it turns out, it's the clock, and we don't get shown anything else, and that's the only suggestion that I see, and it's the 11th hour, and that's the only thing I get to vote on, and my budget runs out for $15,000, and that's it, right, for this year, based on this selection.
That was kinda my exact point about the $15,000. Like, you don't wanna be put in that situation to where you're faced with that. Like, that's a wrong answer.
But that's the committee, right? That's the special committee that's been put together, and that's how it's...
You just need to make sure it's written that you're not...there's not a time limit to spend that money annually.
But there is, right? So, that's the program.
Then get rid of that.
But you can't...this is a budgeted committee, right? This is a budgeted... But you can't, this is a budgeted committee, right? This is a budgeted program.
The money can be kept in an account.
We can add language saying that this, I mean, our money is not one-year money. We have the ability to roll over our funds, correct?
Well, Eric.
There's a, there's a budget rollover process that occurs every year. So if there's interest, there's projects that run over time, or we've not been able to get to that, there's a proposed list that the village board approves post-adoption of the fiscal year budget. So we probably bring that in May or June of that previous fiscal year's dollars for projects before they're they're closed out.
So would you have to address this policy or the art? Because there's language within this plan that says you have to use it within the budget year implemented, or budget year selected.
Could you point me to the portion of
I don't think it'd say that you have to use all of that money within that. It's the artist has to expend it within that budget year that it's that it's granted. So they can't just ask for continuance after continuance after continuance.
So for example, if this gets awarded to the artist in April, and our budget year ends July, something like that.
The end of April is the end of the fiscal year. Part of that, if the contract's been awarded, and this board has approved that, that'd be included in the rollovers that staff would bring forward to the village board for consideration. So it would be included in that project rollover list that that we provide the board annually.
And I remember like last year, some of the things on there were like, you know, Baxter Owen was still tidying up a few of the HMGP grants. I remember asking questions about that.
Correct, correct.
So then, we will not have to wait and see the last proposal, and we wouldn't, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, I think it's fair, it's worth saying in this guidance or in this this framework that, you know, the money doesn't need to be, if less than 15, if less than the budgeted amount is spent, those monies can be rolled over to the following year to continue the grant program, something like that. So that to take the pressure off feeling like we have to award it right now.
And I
Is that feasible? If it's not already committed to a specific project, can that, can like an underrun be rolled over to the following year?
But then I also see a problem at the end of it, right? So if we don't select anything for this year, and we don't select anything for next year, then you're like, well, let's hold off money until like something really big and shiny comes up like down the road. So let's not give anything good to like anybody else who may be getting it. I'm sorry, I'm really thinking about
This is going down like what-if scenarios.
I know.
And I totally understand you feel like you've been burned, but like, I think, I think at this point, we have to just give the committee guidance on what we expect to see brought to us and go from there.
So that's why I'm saying, I think this works for the way that it is. I just, I'm afraid what I'm going to get back from the committee is going to be the bare minimum. I would like to at least maybe see one or two proposals from the committee, their top one, maybe their second one. And I totally understand if the committee only has one landscape.
There should be a selection report, quite frankly.
I think, first off, typically how it would work, like how it worked with special events, was an annual period for submissions was established where all the submissions were then reviewed and graded and chosen, which would happen probably right in June when the new budget year starts.
And then we'd get that report.
And then, and then we make a selection right away, and that fills out, rounds out the whole budget for the rest of the year, where the attempt is to get to finish it by the end of the budget year.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I think to Trustee Sadat's point too, I think if we can set the expectation for the committee, and maybe this is something the liaison to the committee can can help with, is what our expectation is when it's brought forth to us, that there's a selection report that explains here, here are all, here are the ranked choices, here's a little information about them, here's why we selected this one.
And to that point, I mean, this is, this is an open boarding commission that would be part of iCompass, and I'm assuming we'd be loading all those submissions into iCompass that could be not only accessible to the village board, but to the public. And it'd be an open meeting in which the public art committee would be deliberating their recommendation to the village board. So all that would be available.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Does that give enough changes to get us, do we need to put it on another committee of the whole for finalization?
I mean, this would need to, this would need to, staff would recommend this be approved, this plan as part of a resolution. So what staff would need, there's been some items and edits introduced, whether landscape is staying, whether performance is being added, the idea of consensus of the including, and then the selection criteria tied back to the strategic plan. So staff is going to need consensus on final changes here, and then we'd bring it back for approval via a resolution.
Okay.
Joe Boardbeaming.
So the first one is the question of landscaping. Do we have consensus? Trustee?
I'm for it.
Okay.
For landscaping.
I, I understand people's concerns about it, but, but again, I think leaving it in is allowing potential creativity that we might not even be thinking about. I think, I think we should put it in.
Okay. Trustee Sadat?
I'm against it for this time.
Trustee Greco?
I'm against it.
I'm against it at this time as well, too. Again, I'm not against the idea of the creativity, but I think that's a separate board and commission. I mean, really, the purpose of art, how you define it, I guess, and my definition is a no.
Trustee Mullen?
I'm okay with it, basically, because we have the selection criteria in place.
Trustee Wins?
I'm okay with it as well.
Okay, now we have consensus. So the next question was about performing art. Trustee Duffy?
Yes.
Trustee Quetzal?
Yes.
Trustee Sadat?
No.
Trustee Greco?
No.
Trustee Mullen?
Yes.
Trustee Wins?
Because Trustee Duffy's argument was so clear and precise, I agree with him. Yes.
Okay, so we have consensus. And what was the third?
This, Trustee Mullen's addition, well, the grant funding and adding some language related to budget availability, that funding is subject to the annual budget process. Staff can add that language, assuming the board's comfortable with that, wants to see that.
How about if we start with Trustee Wins?
Yes.
Trustee Mullen?
Yep.
Trustee Greco?
Yes.
Trustee Sadat?
Yeah.
Trustee Quetzal?
Yes.
Trustee Duffy?
Yes.
We have consensus.
Okay.
So I think we got
And there was a couple, there was an item related to the selection and application process tied back to the strategic priorities and vision.
Okay. Trustee Wins? Trustee Mullen?
Yep.
Trustee Greco?
Yes.
Trustee Sadat?
So this was around like welcoming communities and all of that from the last go-around?
Yeah, that it's, that one of the, an additional criteria would be alignment to Lyle's strategic vision and any goals set forth in the request for application for the grant.
Would that just be like a dropdown in the selection process?
Yeah, yes.
Trustee Quetzal?
Request for clarification, do you mean that the topic would have to, or that that would be one point in its favor?
One point that it's graded on.
That I would agree with.
Yeah.
And does everybody else see it that way? Trustee Duffy?
Yes.
Okay, so we have consensus on that.
I think that's, that was the list, unless I'm missing.
The word including.
Yes, the word including.
Okay. Trustee Duffy?
Yes.
Trustee Quetzal?
Yes.
Trustee Sadat?
Yes.
Trustee Greco?
Yes.
Trustee Mullen?
Sure.
Trustee Wins? We have consensus. Okay.
Thank you. So we'll bring this back for September 19th for formal adoption. And then in the meantime, staff will revise a board and commission application and get a call for interested commission members.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Did we, I didn't record it on my thing. Did we do public comment on that item?
I don't think
Do we have public comment in the room? Do we have public comment on Zoom? Okay, just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything. Okay, moving on to the next item, safety concerns with the Illinois Safety Act. So I put this on the agenda. I'll discuss my, present my, my reason for putting it on. I've had the occasion to speak to diverse group of people regarding, not, not the Safety Act, it's kind of a misnomer here, but a sub-act of the Safety Act called the Pretrial Fairness Act, which is set to kick in January 1st of 2023. That's the portion of the act that deals with no cash bond, deals with a lot of changes to enforcement. People can't be removed from, from private property, things like that. Cut to the chase, concerns both in Will County and DuPage County. I've spoken with Bob Berlin, I've spoken with people in the Will County Prosecutor's Office. I've seen how vocal the Will County Prosecutor's Office is. I believe this, this effort is bipartisan. It's not, it's not one-sided at all. But I believe the last year and a half that the Safety Act, and particularly this Pretrial Fairness Act, have been in existence, no progress has been made to ferret out some of the unintended consequences and, and some of the results that have not been, not been thought out completely. So I'd like to do, I will do the same thing I did with House Bill 3653, and that's number one, send a letter from the mayor asking legislators and the governor to postpone the implementation of this from July 3, July 1, January 1 of 2023, to a later date, and resolve any of the conflicting concerns that prosecutors have had throughout the area. I'd also like to do a resolution from the board, if, if, if we can support a resolution from the board. But if we can't support a resolution from the board, I will do a letter from the mayor, and I'll do the same thing I did last time, allow anybody that wants to sign onto it with me to do, to have that opportunity as well. So do we have consensus among the board to make this a resolution?
Not from me, no.
Okay. Trustee Mullen?
Yes.
Trustee Greco?
Yes.
Trustee Sadat?
No.
Trustee Quetzal?
Yes.
Trustee Duffy?
No.
Okay, so
But I would like to see the letter to determine if I would want to sign on to it or not.
Okay, okay. I'll get started on that, and that, that finalizes that. Any public comment regarding this item?
Point of order, if, if you have so many signatures on it, it could be a resolution, depending if other people have said no to the letter because they haven't seen the letter yet.
If four sign on?
Might that, might that change opinions on it? Maybe, maybe we can
If four sign on, then we can certainly put that on a future agenda.
Future agenda, yeah.
And, and make it a resolution. If four sign on, that would be enough to make it a viable resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any public comment on Zoom? Okay, thank you. So moving on to item D, Proposed Amendments, Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 13 of the Lyle Village Code. Village Attorney Elliott, would you please provide an overview of the proposed Village Code revision?
Yes. I was asked to review the village ordinances regarding weapons with relation to whether or not it complied with the Illinois Concealed Carry Act. These, the ordinance was adopted before the Illinois Concealed Carry Act was adopted. So in paragraph 10 of the weapons ordinance, I included that if somebody's acting in compliance with the Firearms Concealed Carry Act, it does not apply to the limited functions within the Concealed Carry Act. Also, just in order to, again, give proper tools to the police department, I added the first section, which is in a number of other ordinances, which basically adopts the state criminal code with regard to possession and use of weapons. So that if it's a minor violation that they aren't going to be able to get a state charge on, but it still occurs, then they'll be able to issue ordinance violations for those types of things. Obviously, if somebody's in possession of a machine gun or something like that, they're going to get a felony charge through the state's attorney's office. But minor things can be addressed at the local level through ordinance violations. The other change, I was reviewing the statute, and I was concerned that the ordinance prohibited toy guns without defining what a toy gun was. And I didn't really think that you wanted to tell kids that they couldn't use squirt guns in their, you know. But I understand that there's also concerns with various TikTok challenges and other things where people are using look-alike weapons in public that are causing alarm and disturbance to the community citizens. So it does prohibit toy firearms, and that's specifically designed as something that discharges projectiles in public or into the public right away. And I, the police chief and I, and I think it was one of the sergeants discussed how we worded this specifically to meet their concerns with regard to these toy guns, but that are shooting the projectiles, and at the same time, not, you know, being a heavy hand with the kids with the squirt guns. So I think that just tunes up our ordinance to be more effective. So those are the three changes. The first one, as I said, I, I added at the beginning, adopting the criminal code weapons ordinance, and then I clarified the toy gun, and then I added in the provision that recognizes the adoption of the Concealed Carry Act. So those are the three changes in there. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'm sure the chief, what if you have any concerns as well?
Thank you. I'll start with public comment. Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom? Thank you. Trustee Duffy, we'll start with you, any?
Nothing from me. It looks good. Thank you.
Trustee Quetzal?
Nothing, thank you.
Trustee Sadat?
No.
Trustee Greco?
No.
Trustee Mullen?
There was something you said now in this meeting, something better than I think was written in number 10.
Okay.
The way you phrased it just, just a few minutes ago.
Oh, within the limits of the Concealed Carry Act?
Yeah.
We can add that.
Okay, because I think that, because right now it says this ordinance doesn't apply to you if you're in compliance with, like, well, they probably still shouldn't be setting off cannons. So
Right, well, well, that's, right. Yeah, we can, I'll clarify. Yes, I'll clarify.
I like the way you said it better than I read it, but that's all I, I
Yeah, it was presumed, but we might as well specifically state it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Wins?
I have nothing.
Okay, I think we have consensus to make that minor change and get that presented at a regular meeting. We'll move on to item E, applicability of FOIA and OMA to the Lyle Economic Development Partnership. Village Manager Ertmo, would you please provide a quick overview of this topic?
Absolutely. So the village board had, had delayed a discussion on the LEDP, waiting for clarification from the PAC related to the Open Meetings Act and FOIA applicability to the LEDP as a, as an entity. After the conversation that occurred in the July 18th Committee of the Whole, Village Attorney Elliott did have communication with the PAC's office, who, it's my understanding at this time, was not going to issue a binding nor an advisory opinion related to this matter. The board will recall, at the board's request and for discussion, and at the mayor's request, there was a request that was put to the PAC asking them to make a determination or provide an opinion on this topic. As I mentioned, the village attorney had spoken with the PAC and was advised that they would not be issuing an opinion regarding this matter. However, the PAC did provide an advisory opinion that was dated back in April of 2019 regarding the Oak Park Economic Development Corporation. In sum, the PAC did conclude that the Oak Park Development Corporation was not a public body subject to the requirements of FOIA or OMA. However, because the Village of Oak Park had contracted with the Development Corp. to perform a government function, certain records and possession of the Economic Development Corporation were considered public records of the village. For reference, that opinion has been included in this evening's committee of the whole packet as a kind of a resolution, I guess, to, to the board's inquiry into the matter, and as well as the, the previous opinions regarding the topic issued by village attorneys. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my, my comments. And I don't know if Attorney Elliott had anything further to add, but that concludes mine. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to add clarification that I did ask for further clarification from the PAC office to actually answer the question. from the PAC office to actually answer the question of OMA, which they didn't answer on our response. I believe they did clarify the OMA question from Oak Park in that their determination in Oak Park was based on specific facts of Oak Park's organization versus specific facts of Lisle were not considered. But I've asked for further clarification. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the attorney and.
Right. The PAC opinion addresses the same three factors that we've discussed in reviewing it. One of the things they noted in the PAC opinion was that the city didn't have control over the EDP or whatever they call their organization. I would note that our, the board, the bylaws adopted by it and the contract that we had with LEDP indicated that any changes to their bylaws required village board approval. So that's one additional fact that was not present here. It does show some control over the operations. And the entire executive committee was made up of public members of the LEDP. So the facts are different. And the reason he sent it to me is not to say they would make the same decision as what they did in Oak Park. But it's a sample of a binding opinion that discusses the factors of whether determine something as a public body or not. So it's interesting from that perspective to read the factors and then compare them to our factors.
But they wouldn't give you an opinion and they sent you something that was against your opinion.
They sent me an example of a public opinion that they had. They were not saying that it was comparable to our facts.
So let's say tomorrow, somebody FOIA's the LEDP. What is Lisle's response going to be? You're going to reference what the PAC just said that said that you cannot, that it's not FOI-able.
I think the answer.
That's not what they said. They said any public function of this, anything under the contract with the local government, that any records that this corporation had involving their contract with the local government was FOI-able.
Any?
Yeah, they even said developer proposals.
I thought it said partial.
Any actions taken with regard to the contract with the village. If they're taking other actions, that's not FOI-able. But any actions under their contract, they even said that developer proposals were subject to FOIA.
Is there a way that PAC letters like this are accessible? Like, was it possible for you to have access to this until they sent it to you? There's no means for that right now?
There's a database that does list binding opinions, but they're not sorted by topic. You'd have to go through every year and see.
Read every single one to see what happened?
Well, I mean, they do have an indication at the top, but they don't make them easily searchable. Let's just put it that way.
Okay.
And I think that our original question that went into the PAC to get this clarification was based on the original topic. The PAC's response was based on the lawsuit by Mr. Belat, which dealt with the duty of a third party that's under contract to a government entity. So they said what was applicable to the end result, not so much exactly what was asked for upfront. And that's why I sent us, I asked the second question to be sent to the PAC office going, if this other situation were to arrive again, arise again, how do we handle it? Nonetheless, though, what I was going to answer to Trustee Wins is that the simple answer is to see what's been done for the past four or five months, which is respond to every FOIA request that is submitted to the village, that goes to the LEDP, and the LEDP responds and sends it back in the FOIA response. That's happened numerous times already.
Aren't we required to per the Belat lawsuit?
Yes.
So regardless of anything, we agreed to do that already?
Right. And this opinion supports doing that. It says, "The information requested appears to relate to the corporation's involvement in the planning, financing, and construction of a development that was going to receive public funds. Corporation's records concerning its efforts to facilitate the development with a developer, financial institution, and other corporations involved in the development directly relate to the governmental function of furthering economic development that the corporation performs on behalf of the village. Accordingly, the records in physical custody of the corporation concerning its efforts to facilitate the development for the village are public records." So the PAC opinion supports that as well.
I really enjoy the way lawyers write, Attorney Elliott. Makes my head hurt.
Yeah. That's why, yeah. Probably why they're not indexed really well, too.
Is there anything in this letter that would change how you have advised us in the past?
No.
Okay.
I'm assuming there's still a fundamental disagreement between me and the previous LEDP attorney.
Fair.
I think the trustee Sadat asked a question that didn't get answered.
No, she did. She clearly did. It was, this was a response that was given, but it wasn't given for what we have for LEDP. So it was something that was sent over to us as a supporting document.
It was basically to show how the PAC analyzes this type of question.
Correct.
So it was basically, they clarified and said they didn't scrutinize this for the structure of the company. But by the way, here is, this is why it's required.
This is an answer.
Yes. Which oftentimes, that's what attorneys do, is find the closest applicable solution. Trustee Greco, did we, did you have anything?
Don't have any comments on it.
Okay. Trustee Quetzal? Trustee Duffy?
Okay, that was just informational, correct?
Yeah. But I would just like to, it's been a year now since the LEDP bill was pulled for payment when I saw this problem arising. And just about a year ago, that that bill was approved for $87,000 because we had more important work to do than quibble over an $87,500 payment to the LEDP. In that time, $12,546 were spent by LEDP retained attorneys to fight the village. $3,151 was spent by village attorneys for legal opinions and fighting the Belat lawsuit under advice that we were required to comply. And the Belat team, after some negotiation, was negotiated down to $23,000 from a higher initial amount. Total bill, $38,698 for what we knew on day one was a requirement for this organization. And we're quibbling over $200 sponsorships, $500 sponsorships, $1,000 sponsorships for events that have been going on for eight, 10-plus years. I just want to remind the board of that. I also want to remind the board that on August 25th, Rath G. Woodward was recommended by Ansel Glink to the LEDP. At the same time that Ansel Glink was being considered to be legislative counsel for the Village of Lisle. So there's a lot of questions to be asked, a lot of questions to be answered. But time will go on. We live in interesting times. There's a lot of things going on. And as we unearth stones, more answers will come to us. But a lot of fascinating questions.
Can I ask your questions now if you'd like?
Sure.
Please. Really.
Kind of ridiculous, is this?
See, this is where, man, I was so hoping to get out of here because I got work tomorrow. There's a difference, I think the issue, and Attorney Elliott, you've heard me talk about this, too, which is there's the implicit versus explicit. And when you go to the original bylaws and funding agreement, all that needed to be in there was a simple clause that said, hey, OMA and FOIA are applicable. But actually, what it read was you're applicable to all state laws without defining what that meant. Now, that is the root of this whole thing. I think going back in time, probably should have said OMA and FOIA. And that would have solved that big thing. I don't, that is, goes to that part of it. As to any other implications or anything else, I, without that stuff written in there, and I think, Attorney Elliott, you can correct me if I'm wrong about what I'm about to say, is no matter what, these EDPs are very complicated structures. They are newer, they involve private dollars and public dollars, and they involve a lot of different things. So, and you meet one EDP, you meet one EDP. Like, they follow some root causes, they follow some root principles, but there are some that are more private versus public in nature. It just, yeah, I'm not gonna, I don't want to be here for the next two hours. I just want to say like, that's, at the end of the day, I think it gets to how you write contracts and bylaws and stuff. We want to make sure we're very clear. And I think that that's a lesson learned for the future when we set up anything.
Thank you. Trustee Mullin? Did you have?
No, I'm just really curious what stone you're trying to unearth.
I don't know what's out there. We're going through an audit right now.
Okay. The audit would not have anything to do with most of what you just said.
I can't answer that. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I have something. So your condescending tones are just, it's so insulting to us and to say that we spent this money fighting these things. This is what you do, just like Belat filed the lawsuit in order to unearth things, if you want to use those types of words. To call it, I believe you used the word quibble, squabble? I don't know. Whatever, you're implying that we were fighting over something so minor. That is not the case at all.
I wasn't.
No, excuse me.
The record reflects that.
I think it's my turn, right? So the problem was, is the complete embarrassing treatment that you gave of the director that we had put in place and chosen for this position. There were so many moving parts that was going on. You had an entire community that was up in arms about what was happening. And we were getting comments from people all the time. So to say that any of this has been a waste of time, I don't think so at all. I think we figured out something and we learned something about the LEDP, which, for one thing, you talk about the last five months, it is completely not functioning. It doesn't exist, it hasn't done anything. So this entity that you created, that you thought was going to be this big move for the village has stalled and has done completely nothing. And the way that you created it led to everything that we've gone through in the past several years. It wasn't us, the LEDP wasn't our idea. We had the Lisle Economic, the.
LCVB.
The LCVB that we fought hard to keep in place because they.
And Trustee Wins, I think you said no to this, and so did I. And we said, we need to take some time to revisit the bylaws.
Right, that was the exact point.
Perfect.
Is we had the LCVB, and what we exactly said was, let's keep the LCVB in place, functioning entity of economic development, while we still, and I believe I used the word cart before the horse. Because there are so many things that are gonna, there's no way this is going to line up. You were gonna, you cut the funding to the LCVB before the LEDP was a functioning entity. So now you want to sit here and blame everybody else when what we tried to do was stop you from doing exactly what you did, which led to a PAC result, which led to months and months of us waiting from the Illinois Attorney General on what this exact is. So we, and lawsuits, we got sued because of the way that you handled the LCVB's destruction. And so for you to sit here now.
Point of order, I think this is derogatory.
I don't care what you think, it's my time.
No, it's everyone's time up here.
Trustee Greco.
No, it is my time.
No, no, no. We abided by the five-minute rule. So at any point, anybody can point, and I'm pointing out a point of order right now.
Say point of order.
This is derogatory towards the mayor.
Thank you for your.
You're pointing something out that is not true.
So, Trustee Greco, where was your point of order when he implied the Ansel Glink thing related to how essentially, when we asked for Ansel Glink?
Where was your point of order when people from the.
So is it only when the mayor?
Calling people derogatory names on this board? No, Trustee Greco, when you want to try to be my friend when we walk in this door.
I do.
And you want to be friendly and talk about personal matters. But you sat there and you didn't make a point of order one time in defense of me.
But your tone right now, and I have made points of order in defense of you multiple times before, that's not true. You're painting a picture that's not true right now. You don't have, first of all, you don't have to yell.
No, excuse me.
You don't have to raise your voice. I'm not yelling.
Listen, the size of my lungs should be no matter to you. My voice is not raised. This is my voice. I toned my voice, my regular voice down to deal with everybody else's, their tone's a voice. I'm a large man. So whether you think my tone is elevated or not, your tone is not elevated.
Well, so we are off topic? We're way off topic.
Way off topic.
I'd like to.
Make your point of order and then let me finish what I was saying.
Sure. I'd like to conclude with what Trustee Duffy had said, and that this is a learning experience and that anything.
Isn't it my time?
It's anybody's time.
No, it's not anybody's time.
The clock is not running. We did not waive the time limit rule?
The time limit rule was on the other agenda item.
It was.
You just went around the board and you gave everybody their time to speak, and it's my time.
Well, you threw some stones and a bunch of us reacted, so you called on us.
I reported the facts, is what I did.
There were no facts.
So I am reporting facts.
And about overturning stones. You're making failed threats.
And the facts are exactly what I said happened. We discussed this just in this manner to say, hey, if you move on. Because frankly, I don't really mind the way the LEDP is. I looked for some change in that structure. I questioned the LCVB to their face about the way certain things were done. My concern was for the economic development of the Village of Lisle. And my point to you back then, and Trustee Greco, I don't think you were watching, frankly, because all of this stuff was discussed. So.
Point of order, again, another derogatory comment. So can I answer the?
I made no derogatory comment.
About LCVB?
I'm speaking to the point. If you're going to make your comments about uncovering stones and this, then I want to remind the public exactly what happened. But they're sitting here hearing your version of the facts, which that's all it is, it's your version. The LCVB was a functioning entity to help the economic development of the Village of Lisle. My point then was that let's keep that thing rolling. And as we develop the LEDP, we will see where the two merge. Robin Friday, I believe it was, the people from the LCVB offered to be part of the LEDP. There were so many options that came before the board on what that could look like. And you could have had their influence and their help as this program was developed. But you refused any of that help. You took advantage of the fact that you had majority of the board. And then you moved on. And what happened is where we're at today. Months and months of delay and nothing getting done with the LEDP. I'm actually ready to move that the LEDP could completely be dissolved, and it is no more. And then start over from the beginning. I mean, that's where I'm at, and I wonder if we would have enough consensus to do that.
Is that an option?
Well, you could vote to.
Completely eliminate the LEDP from the Village of Lisle. The way it stands. We just got a result from the PAC, and so since we don't like.
Do you want me to answer your question?
I'm clarifying what my question is. So we could say, I don't, since the PAC has said that it's a public body susceptible to FOIA, we could then say, well, we no longer, now we have that information, we no longer want to have an LEDP. And if there was majority rule from the board, we could get rid of the LEDP?
Well, you're under contract to them, so.
So Trustee Elliott, if I may interrupt.
No, I'm the attorney.
No, no. But isn't the contract state that they need to have an investor program after one year? The funding agreement states that.
Right, right.
So, they are in violation technically of the
You could cancel the funding agreement, but they exist as a private entity. So you can't dissolve it, but you could break your ties with it.
May I ask one follow-up question? I apologize for interrupting you. Is, if the LEDP's funding agreement is closed, how is, is there money that, money that the village gave versus LEDP has raised itself? If the funding agreement goes away, I believe, is there, what is the mechanisms for reclaiming that money? Or does that stay with the LEDP just because the funding agreement gets closed?
Um, well, that, that's one of the reasons I think we're waiting for the audit. I would ask Eric to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it's only paid out as its invoice, so I don't think there's any money, but I'm not, I'd have to see the audit.
Okay. Well, I'll make a resolution, I'll make our motion for our next September, for our, for our October meeting, because September's busy to have this on the topic for the dissolution of the funding agreement with LEDP.
I'd support that conversation.
Same.
It only needs
I don't think we have concurrence.
It does, to add anything to the committee, the whole, it only requires two. You need three if it's a staff
We have adequate
Per our code of conduct that Trustee Greco has talked about.
Regarding the LE, the LCVB, the LCVB was invited to participate in the LEDP and declined that invitation. The LCVB
After you removed all their funding.
The LCVB, um, was not involved in economic development. They were involved in tourism. They acted as a tourism arm solely. The tourism perspective got, got
Forgive me, I misspoke.
Got, got, um, contracted out to DuPage County CVB, where we were entitled to more state aid and more grants. So there's better benefit to go with the DuPage County certified
The LCVB even recommended that we get with the DuPage Convention Bureau, like they were very forthcoming about the benefits of receiving that because of the new House legislation.
But the record would show that the LCVB was non-responsive in, in participating in the, in the LEDP. So, that said, that's my report at this time right now. Once the audit is finalized, a year-end review will be finalized and presented, as well as achievements for both the village and, and the LEDP. With that, we'll go on to officials and staff reports. Trustee Wins, do you have any officials and staff reports? I'm sorry, members of the village board reports?
No, I don't.
Trustee Mullin?
No.
Trustee Greco? I think that everyone's opinions are valued, and we each have our opportunity to provide them. We all may come to a differing opinion on how we see things. But at the end of the day, it's our collective vote that makes it action. And I think it's important to respect, you know, that time when someone's giving something. I also believe in, in code of conduct as well. I also appreciate constructive criticism, where it's due. I find it ironic that earlier in our regular meeting, that I had asked questions about a subject, and I was told that I should have emailed those forward before or contacted staff separately for it. And the issue of transparency, I asked those questions because I had constituents that had asked those questions, and I wanted them to know that I was reflecting that information. I was quite busy today, so I couldn't get that information off. I had some personal things I had to attend to. We got the packet on Friday, and again, I just thought it was ironic that it's not my voice that you're hearing the most of up here this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Quetzal.
I want to thank you, Trustee Greco, for the questions you raised. I, I think you're absolutely being a responsible trustee when there's an agenda item for well in excess of a quarter million dollar in spending to ask those questions. And I think transparency is well served for those questions to be asked at the meeting as opposed to, to privately. I think that point was brought up in context of the length of meetings. We've had a couple of references this evening to the length of meetings and as how it pertains to our personal schedules. We all signed on for this work. We asked to be entrusted to these positions, and often these meetings take time because of substantive, substantive issues before us. And I would never consider it appropriate for us to shortchange conversation in the interest of our personal schedules. I also think we're, we all took an oath when we took the, these positions. I think we are duty-bound, and I think we are honor-bound to invest ourselves in the advancement and in the benefit of the village. I think it demeans us, I think it demeans this body, and I think it ill-serves the public if we digress into trying to undermine rather than constructively advance initiatives of the village. And I certainly think it demeans us and undermines us and ill-serves our constituents if we are less than collegial with each other.
And that applies to everybody?
Yes, it does, I would think so.
Trustee, Trustee Duffy?
Nothing.
Thank you, and I'd just like to, to just share that over the past year, the Lyle business community has grown by over three dozen new businesses. Over a dozen businesses have changed hands with, with investors. Lyle is growing. Our sales tax revenue, this month was the seventh highest sales tax revenue month, six of which have been in the past twelve, twelve months, the past year. Our sales tax revenue has grown by over a million and a half dollars over the previous year. Development is growing in Lyle, and if we all stick to the basics, we stick to the course, we stick to the fundamentals, it'll continue to grow. Conversations I've had with local businesses show that, illustrate that. Businesses are interested, businesses are invested, and businesses are trying new, unique methods of engaging with the public and growing business. They're doing, doing billboard media, they're doing radio media, they're doing things other than electronic social media. And, and it's proving, it's, proving its worth, it's working in Lyle. So, just wanted to leave everybody with that. We'll move on to village staff comments.
Yeah, just a couple of items, Mayor, just, uh, as part of our infrastructure maintenance. The Public Works Department is handling pavement striping and pavement markings this week, so they'll be in downtown and throughout the community, so people can be on the lookout for that. As well as our police officers in the police department are participating in a Cop on a Roof fundraiser for Special Olympics Illinois. So, they'll be at Two Dunkins in, in Lyle here on Friday from 5:00 AM until noon. I think Chief Lico was one of the, when he was an officer, first brought that program forward in our participation. So we thank the police department for doing that. As we head back to school, we have our SROs headed back to school as well. So Officers Lewis and Armitage will be in our schools, so we wish them luck and a great school year. Mayor, that concludes staff reports this evening.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to recess into closed session for the purposes of reviewing closed-session meeting minutes and setting a price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the village?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Ralph, please call the roll.
Trustee Greco?
Aye.
Trustee Quetzal?
Aye.
Trustee Duffy?
Aye.
Trustee Mullin?
Aye.
Mayor Puse?
Aye, we're in recess. We will come back and reconvene as soon as we finish up business. We will come back and reconvene as soon as we finish up business. We will come back and reconvene as soon as we finish up business.